Okay, Carol Ben speaking. Chair Lawrence Smith.
Present.
Vice Chair Gene Luer.
Present.
Secretary Benz present Linda Garrick.
Present.
Gene Malia.
Present.
Chuck Sargent.
Present.
Joe Schneer.
Present.
All present.
All present or accounted for, thank you. Next, does anyone have any announcements or correspondence that we haven't received and know of? For the best of our knowledge. Hearing no one speaking, we will proceed with the order of business. The first thing on the order of business is approval of the agenda. If someone has anything to change, so speak. If not, I will announce what I want, a motion. I hear no one speaking, I would like a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Eugene Malia still approved.
Linda Garrick second.
Very good, I have a motion and it's second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor say aye.
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 Same sign. The motion carries. We will approve, we will keep going on the agenda as printed. Item number one is approval of the June thirty twenty twenty minute meetings. Anyone has any changes, please speak up. If not.
I would like to speak, Mr. Chairman, this is Linda Garrick. May the chair recognize me?
I will recognize you.
Page four, paragraph six, references that I made are related to the topography of the above sea level and not to the height of the wall. I was referencing the structure and the relation to the wall and the topography.
Alright, Linda, I think that's a need for what the catch and type, oh yes. That's good, Carol or Ann Pauline. If that can be amended quite easily, please speak Carol and Pauline.
What did you want me to say?
I want you to say that that can be amended quite easily and then I will ask someone to have a motion.
I'm trying to find where she said that at.
Linda.
Linda, if it's okay with you, I'm just gonna put in parentheses that you are referencing the structure.
In the feet above sea law, sea level, I was not, I was referring to the topography, not the height of the wall. Page four, paragraph six.
So how about you give the language that you would like inserted?
Thank you, I'll do that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I have a motion, could I have a second?
Chuck Sargent speaking, I second.
I have motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing no one speak on discussion. I'll call the motion, all of the favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The minutes of the meeting are now official, thank you, the motion carries. Item number two is the Addison Township Public Library Site Plan Application Review. Marshall ID number zero five two seven two five six zero zero nine and zero five two seven two five four zero zero seven. I will, at that point, turn it over to Mr. Bowman who will review what we're doing and what we should do. Mr. Bowman.
Thank you Chairman Smith, this is Township Planner Bowman. What we're looking for is a recommendation of approval if you believe that the site plan meets the zoning ordinance requirements. Or a recommendation of disapproval if you do not believe the site plan meets the requirements. I believe what is appropriate is to recommend approval of the revised site plan for the library. Subject to the conditions as specified in the August Township Engineers Report. If we can get that motion, then you are free to add additional conditions. Depending upon whether you're satisfied with the applicant's response to the concerns you expressed at your June meeting. We're looking for a motion to recommend approval or denial. Or approval with conditions as specified in the Engineers' August Report.
Alright, Mr. Bowman.
That concludes my comments at this time, Mr. Chairman.
It sounds to me like the appropriate motion would be to approve with the additional conditions. Would that be correct?
That is correct, that is correct, Mr. Chairman, those specified in the Engineers' August Report.
Would someone please like to make that motion and if they don't like that one, make another one.
I'd like to be recognized Chairman, this is Linda Garrick.
You're recognized ma'am.
I have a few questions on the revised site plan if I may, to ask.
Linda, can we have a motion and then we discuss it?
I would like to make a motion that the site plan be revised and come back to the planning commission.
I'll second motion, this is Gene Luer.
Alright, I have motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Bowman, that is not what you recommend, is that correct?
Well, I'm merely trying to get the ball rolling, the motion is certainly appropriate. Once we identify the revisions that you would like to have. We can determine whether or not it really needs to come back. So let's hear of the revisions that would be requested. Then we can determine whether it can be accomplished without necessarily coming back.
Shall we discuss some without a motion, yes or no? We have a motion for Linda. The thing that I questioned was to have it have to come back. If we can discuss you wouldn't have to come back to the planning, is that correct, Mr. Bowman?
That's correct, you could approve it subject to the following revisions being made prior to presentation to the township board. Let's find out what the revisions are.
Could you please rescind your motion and have it so it doesn't have to come back if all these things are strained out?
Yes.
Okay, and please rescind your motion and make a new one, thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we address the revisions that need to be made if we can address them at the planning commission. That the motion can be made to approve subject to revisions. And recommendation to approval to the board.
Thank you, I have a motion, could I have a second?
I'll second that Carol.
Pardon?
Carol Ben, second that.
I have a motion and a second, alright, now comes the discussion. Linda, you made the motion and had some items, would you please express your concerns?
I have several, number one is approval for the road commission ingress egress. We're approving a site plan in concept. I don't see where the road commission has approved the ingress egress on side road or on Rochester Road at the top of the hill. That concerns me that we don't have written approval.
Okay, next item.
Might we address these individually, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, go ahead Rand, go ahead.
Township Planner Bowman, one of the conditions of the August Engineers' Report is this condition. So if acceptable, the motion to recommend approval subject to the township engineers' conditions would include this particular condition.
I agree, I just am concerned it's still a concept. Alright, well to move forward, is there a wall at two sixty five Cantley or is there to be a fence? Or is the spruce trees adequate screening?
So coming out of the previous meeting. The statement that was made from the commissioners that we would discuss the screening with the owner of the property. And we've done so. The packet that you have for the meeting's meeting is a letter highlighting the discussion that we've had. With Bradley, the homeowner of two sixty five Cantley. And we presented him landscaping plans that you see on sheet L two. And he said that was satisfactory.
I'm sorry, it was inarticulate what you said, is it a wall or a fence or trees?
It's trees, it's what you see on plan L two, should I repeat what it says very am I not
I'm sorry, the sound is terrible, I saw a wall on the
Can you hear me better now?
I can hear you.
Okay. So what we have on sheet L two of the plans that were submitted. It's a landscaping plan. That's your standard tree line just south of the property of Cantley. And additionally, the the statement that was made from the commissioner leaving our previous meetings that we would just would discuss the visual screening between Cantley and the library lot that you are looking to build on. And we've done so and this letter is in the packet. It says the library board five, James Baldi Gough. He met with Bradley, the homeowner of two sixty five Cantley to review the revised site plan which indicates the standard planting of evergreens in the area south of his property line and along the north edge of Bradley expressed that he was satisfied with the updated drawings showing the vegetation with screening.
Thank you, I saw the letter, I'm just confused that the site plan continues to show a black masonry wall if a fence is proposed. The site plan should be updated?
Which, could you tell me which sheet you see the block masonry on?
Give me one second, thank you, hold on.
James, this is Jason, if you look on the the site plan sheet at C two, we are calling out a masonry wall along that property line. We can, we can update that accordingly.
Thank you, I don't need to look for that page then, so it's gonna be changed to a four foot fence, a six foot fence, a wood fence? Who's responsible for the fence?
Wasn't there a rock wall, Jason, that was put in for because of steep elevation?
Oh, no, no, there's a, there was a screening wall, six foot tall screen wall.
I apologize, okay, so there's conflicting, Linda, you're correct. You prefer the standard tree line to remove that six foot masonry wall.
Excuse me, I'm gonna interrupt for a second, so those who are calling in, I'm glad that you are listening and calling in. But you do need to move your phones and everyone else not speaking, except for the main people who are participating would need to computers so that the quality of sound is just like a phone call. So if you, everyone could please move their phones unless they're talking, thank you.
Alright, so I'm understanding that the site plan is gonna be amended to show no fence? Is that correct?
That would be correct. And if it's okay, would you also just confirm that with the civil engineer, Jason, who's on this call?
Yeah, is there, would a four foot fence be acceptable to the township or is there a desire, we can go either way?
Well, there was discussion about a fence with the applicant, I guess I wondered what kind of fence was being proposed if that was the case.
This is Township, Township Planner Bowman inserting a comment here, there is a requirement in the ordinance for a wall. The wall that's proposed along Cantley, I believe, was already shown, the planting is in addition to the wall.
Mr. Bowman, are you saying that the wall is required and there is no fence option?
By recollection that the wall was between the differing zoning designations, that's why it was shown.
So the wall will stay, thank you.
The minutes of June thirty, pardon me, the minutes of June thirty should reflect that fact.
Thank you, another issue was the tree. Last minutes that the trees were to be twelve feet, I did not see that on the landscape plan.
We're looking for the applicant, we're looking for the applicant to concur that these height at planting will be twelve feet.
This is for the seven evergreen trees along the north property line of the south line of the residential area?
Yes, my understanding.
Okay, yeah, they're currently on the planes you have in front of you, they're listed as eight feet, but we can make that change to twelve feet.
Also, the elevations, I believe it's page A one oh one. They're designated as southeast, north, east and west. I don't believe that the directions are correct and that site plan should be amended, they're showing the north side of the elevation should be the south side of the elevation and so forth. I thought that should be corrected. If you could look at that site plan.
Which, which page is that, you're talking about for the elevation of the building?
Yeah, the label's on A one oh one, like the north elevation is actually the south wall of the building, so they just need to switch those labels.
Can that be corrected?
Yeah, that's a minor fix that can easily be addressed.
Thank you, the other thing was the recommendation from the fire department for fire code, also building code does require a second ingress egress door, where is that to be?
This is Ron Raider with TGG Architects, we have talked about the location of that door potentially being at the southwest corner of the building. We do have two primary means of egress, but we're going to add one additional one.
I didn't notice it on the elevations, I'm sorry, as the planning commissioner, one of the things that we look at is exterior elevations for a site as well as ingress egress and so forth and that is why I thought we should see a revised site plan.
Someone responding to Linda?
Well, once we've, this is Planner Bowman, once we have identified all the revisions that we'd like to see. We can determine whether indeed it needs to come back or not, since we're talking about elevations, it appears there's no roof units for air conditioning for the library, is that true?
That is correct.
And we saw no evidence of air conditioning at the exterior of the building.
We did not realize, as TGG Architects, we were not given information that that was part of the submittal requirement.
If there is no roof unit, that's acceptable, if there are roof units, we want to see the screening for the roof units, I understand your representation to be that there are no roof units and that's acceptable.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, this is Planner Bowman again, the question becomes what are the other conditions, the other revisions that would like to see the site plan? And do those constitute sufficient changes to warrant it coming back? Or are you comfortable with sending it along to the township board once those revisions are shown on the plan? So that's yet to be discussed.
And that would be the planning commission members to decide if they want to okay it with revisions or not, is that correct?
That's correct, but it would not come before the township board until those revisions are made.
Yes, I, well, if we, if we okay the revisions, then it will go before the township board, is that correct?
That's correct, for example, the issue of road commission approval, we don't have that yet and what the township engineer is saying, as well as Commissioner Garrick, is that we want to see that approval before the township board considers the matter. I can see that's a little bit of a chicken and egg. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Whose responsibility will be to make sure all these conditions or paperwork etcetera, etcetera are okayed before it does go before the township board?
The planner, the engineer and the fire chief.
Okay, so it would be out of the township planning board's hands if you three guys handle that situation?
If you choose, but you're certainly within the rights to have it come before you and act as a planning commission at a subsequent meeting, that's your choice.
Right, I agree, it would be up to the planning commission to decide, okay. Linda, did you, are you satisfied with all the answers that you received?
Once again, I feel it's the planning commission's responsibility to see an approved site plan prior to going to the planning commission. The fact there's no exterior revision that we can see regarding a second doorway, an ingress egress, ingress egress to the building, walkways, parking, that sort of thing where it's gonna be located. I would really like to see that before we recommend approval, being told it's at the southwest corner. You know, is that a staff entrance? I don't understand how it fits into your site, to be honest, you have a courtyard in the back that looks like a really great place. And to access that, the paving goes around the north side of the building, it doesn't go around the other side of the building, so I'm a little confused on how the site works. I appreciate, hope you appreciate what I'm saying, I mean your pathway, your concrete goes to the
We'll have to put in the revised interior layout, which takes advantage of that.
I'm not so concerned about the interior part of it, it's the exterior that the planning commission is responsible to see. So if you're putting another doorway.
And when I said interior, I'm referring to the ingress egress entrances that we have. So we do have doors, we have a set of doors that are directly across from the entrances that you currently have that will allow you to get to that rear patio, as well as another one from the west side of the building that enters onto that patio as well.
So your elevations still need to be revised to show that door because you're showing windows there?
I, yeah, I understand that, and that would be, you would see those changes on, just on A one oh one.
Yeah, I looked at A one oh one, I didn't, I didn't see that it was a sliding door or an opening.
Yeah, so it's not, I said it's not on there, so it would be, we would have to update that to show it.
Yeah, I would love to see your site plan complete.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
Township Planner, having heard the extent of these concerns or these conditions. In light of the fact that we're still awaiting road commission approval, in light of the length of time that's likely to take. Asking for the revisions to come back before the planning commission is a reasonable request. And will not delay the applicant from proceeding with its plans.
I agree with your thoughts, Mr. Bowman, I'm gonna step in and call the motion, I believe. And then if it goes one way or the other, and I hope it goes the way that Linda is talking. If it does not, then we'll have to go from there, but if we will call the motion now and then we'll have an, I hopefully will have another motion that will say it's coming back before the planning commission. Any other commissioners care to speak about this right this minute?
Mr. Chair, this is Gene Luer.
Please.
I just have one kind of concern here. As I recall, when they improved Rochester Road, Jim. They, they put a drain from the existing parking lot to your property, I believe it's an open drain. Is that gonna be tied into the storm system, is there any plans for that? Or has anybody brought that up to the road commission?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
They put it in.
My name is Jason Longhurst, I'm a Noahite and press engineer, so we're the civil engineer for the project. And we've actually been meeting with the road commission all along as this project has been evolving. We did secure a preliminary geometric approval from them based on an initial concept that we had for this plan. So we have met with them and then what we've done is as the plan's developed, we sat down with them again to show them the layout that's in front of you. And they're okay with it, but we have not made a formal permit submittal yet, we're kind of waiting for things to develop a little bit further. So as far as the approaches go, we're confident that the road commission will approve those. And then to answer your question about the drainage, that was another issue that we've been going back and forth with them about. Because the, as you noted, the, there's an end section that discharges right into the middle of this property. And then kind of flows north into the west, northwest corner, so what we're doing as part of this is we're actually gonna enclose that discharge point. Reroute it around the north side of Rochester Road and then north up to the current discharge point where it's at now, so we'll be providing an easement to the road commission for the little piece of stormwater pipe that'll be enclosed and handling that discharge.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman Chuck Sargent speaking.
Go ahead Chuck.
On the topic of drainage and surface water runoff. Looking at the sedimentation scarification sheet in the site package. The septic and filtration system has yet to be approved by the WRC, correct?
That's correct.
I've taken your word for it, yes.
Okay, so a concern is the filtration of that surface water runoff that ultimately will discharge into Lakeville Lake. Do you understand?
The, the, the surface water runoff is gonna be separate from the septic system, the surface water we're collecting via a network of swales and rain gardens, so we're actually, we're providing a rain garden at the, kind of the northwest property corner. That's gonna filter, that'll filter all of the stormwater runoff prior to discharge into the lake, so we are providing a means of filtration prior to discharging stormwater offsite. The, the septic system, we obviously got this far along, we'll go meet with the road, or the WRC, Oakland County Health Department to get the septic system finalized as well.
Okay, thank you, are you?
Oh, you're all set Chuck?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else? I'm gonna call the motion and then we'll see if we're gonna just let the revisions go and not go back to the township board or we're gonna make a new motion and send it to the board. The motion is that we pardon? The motion is that we were going to accept all these differences and concerns and have it taken care of internally and not come back to the planning commission. So if we vote yes, it'll, it'll not come back to the planning commission, if we vote no. We will proceed and probably have another motion that says it goes back to the planning commission and then it will go to the township board. So, does anybody have any questions about the motion?
Mr. Chairman, Township Planner Bowman. I believe in light of the conversation that it's appropriate to defeat this motion and ask for the revised site plan to come before the planning commission.
That is what I'm asking, that this motion be defeated, so the motion that I'm asking that people vote no. We'll take a roll call vote, so.
Okay.
Are you there to take a roll call vote?
Yes, I am.
Okay, remember commissioners, that yes means it goes right to the board and no means that we're gonna revise it and look at it ourselves and then it goes to the township board. right to the Board, and no means that we're going to revise it and look at it ourselves, and then it goes to the Township Board. Carol, call them.
Okay. Chair Lawrence Smith?
No.
Vice Chair Gene Lord?
No.
Secretary Benz? No. Linda Garrick?
No.
Gene Malaya?
No.
Chuck Sargent?
No.
Joe Schner?
No.
All done.
Obviously, the motion is defeated, and we will proceed from there. Um, Mr. Bowman, do you want to speak for one second before we get someone else to make it on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It would be appropriate to make a motion now in light of the consensus that has been expressed, to ask for the revisions to be made before scheduling the matter, before a future Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, sir. Could I have a Commissioner so make that motion?
Chair, Chairman, this is Gene Lord. I'll make that motion.
Carol Benz, I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second that we will not accept the provisions tonight, that we are going to ask all these things be brought back to the Planning Commission for our okay before it goes back to the Township Board. I have motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Carol, I want a roll call vote. Yes means that we'll go back to the, it'll come back to us.
Okay, everybody ready?
Everybody ready.
Chair Lawrence Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gene Lord?
Yes.
Secretary Benz? Yes. Linda Garrick?
Yes.
Chuck Sargent?
Yes.
Forgot you, Gene. Gene Malaya?
Yes.
And Joe Schner?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. That means it will come back to us. Uh, Linda, thank you for your homework, and Chuck, and everybody else that, uh, had anything to say about that. Uh, Mr. Bowman, does that conclude, uh, what needs to be done on this particular item on the agenda?
It does, Mr. Chairman.
Do any of the Commissioners have anything to say about concluding that particular item?
Um, I would just like to say thank you to, uh, the applicants. Um, we're all looking forward to seeing a fine library in the Township. Thank you.
Yes, very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments off the cuff? Next item on the agenda is public forum. Um, I'm not sure how we're going to do that, but however we're going to do it, does anybody want to speak up? For the good of the order? Hearing no one speak up for the good of the order this evening on public forum, the next item is Commissioners' Reports. I will report for the ZBA. Uh, we had one hearing last month, and we are going to probably conclude it this month. Nothing out of the ordinary. Uh, any other Commissioners having any reports, so speak? Hearing none, uh, next item on the agenda is the favorite item.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion.
Second it?
I have a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Uh, the discussion would be, I think this went fairly well. Uh, I, I hope everybody's satisfied and happy, and here we go. Motion and a second. Anybody want to discuss adjournment?
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman. As Planner Bowman, I'd like to extend my appreciation to Clerk Bennett for making the accommodations for this. It's not as easy as it looks, so thank you, Pauline.
Oh, she had to put up with me.
Thank you, guys. I'm glad the meeting went well. So this was a good, good one for the first time out, so thank you.
I'm, I'm quite delighted also. So all of in favor say aye?
Aye.
Most leave sign. We are adjourned, and thank you again.
Thank you.